Fire?
Here.
Taysom?
Here.
Rosen dish?
Here.
Bargander?
Here.
Wagner?
Here.
Whitso?
Here.
Fisher?
Here.
Ferrell?
Here.
Butchkey?
Here.
And Henler?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic of which this is the first and only nation under God indivisible with the ultimate justice for all. Item C is a public hearing, special assessments for the Cleveland Street Reconstruction Project including concrete curb and gutter, asphalt street paving, concrete driveway aprons, concrete sidewalks, sanitary sewer service laterals, water service laterals, curb boxes and underdrain for the project's 312-241 street construction, 312-242 water main and service laterals, 316-777 storm sewer and 352-144 sanitary service laterals in the following streets: Cleveland Street to Central Avenue to Daigie Street, Chestnut Avenue, Cleveland Street to Blodgett Street, Oak Avenue, Cleveland to Cleveland Street to Blodgett and Pine Avenue, Cleveland Street to Blodgett. This item does require a public hearing. At this time, I'll open up the floor to members of the public to wish to address the council regarding these public hearing items. Anyone from the public wish to address the council? We will, just as a courtesy on this particular public hearing, give an extra 30 to 40 seconds for folks to call in during this public hearing. Second call of the public hearing, anyone wish to address the council? Final call, anyone from the public wish to call in or address the council in person? Seeing no one, we will go ahead and close that public hearing. We'll move to item D, a public hearing, amending the official map to remove a proposed future right-of-way located between the intersection of Peach Avenue and East Fourteenth Street and at the intersection of Felker Avenue and East Eighth Street. This item as well requires a public hearing. At this time, I'll open up the floor to members of the public that wish to address the council regarding this hearing. First call, anyone from the public wish to address the council? Second call, anyone from the public wish to address the council regarding this public hearing? And final call, anyone wishing to address the council for this public hearing? Seeing no one, we will close that public hearing and we'll move on to item E, public comment period. At this time, the mayor will recognize members of the public who have indicated their desire to address the council. Upon recognition by the mayor, persons may address the council first stating their name and address. The council may take action on emergency matters introduced by members of the public. Anyone from the public wish to address the council? And at this time, we will close the public comment period, move on to item F, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the May 12, 2020 regular meeting, May 14, 2020 special meeting, January 28, 2020 closed session, February 11, 2020 closed session and February 25, 2020 closed session? Motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Butchkey, is there a second? Second by Mrs. Sprouse? Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote please.
Fire?
Here.
Taysom?
Yes.
Rosen dish?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Whitso?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Ferrell?
Yes.
Butchkey?
Yes.
And Henler?
No.
Item G, staff updates. Steve, any staff updates?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just have one and it's actually coming from the city attorney. Recently, we had an email from someone and we had a little bit of exchange back and forth and it just brings to mind, you know, one of the reminders that maybe we need to throw out once in a while, especially as new councils come on too, just a good refresher regarding those exchanges and making sure we don't run afoul of open meetings law. Pat?
Pat?
Hey, I missed that. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that I reminded everybody that we oftentimes get these blanket emails that includes all members of the council and it's not a good idea to respond to those in a blanket fashion because we do run very close to running afoul of the open meetings law when we do that. There certainly are some arguments for that. So if you do want to respond, the way to do that would be to respond to one or two people, but do not respond back as that blanket email because we are essentially engaging in discussion on that topic with everybody. So just a reminder.
Thank you. Any others, Steve?
No, I have no others.
Nope. Item H, mayor's comments. Employee recognitions Travis Sherden, Police Department, June 1, 2005, 15 years and Justin Casperson Parks and Rec, June 8, 2015, five years. Item H, I'm sorry, item I, any council comments? Comments from the council? Seeing none, how about item J, any reports from commissions, boards or committees? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to receive and place on file proving all recommended actions in the consent agenda? A motion by Mrs. Sprouse? Is there a second? Second by Mr. Wagner? Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote please.
Fire?
Yes.
Taysom?
Yes.
Rosen dish?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Whitso?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Ferrell?
Yes.
Butchkey?
Yes.
And Henler?
Yes.
Thank you very much. That motion carries. Item M, first reading of ordinance number 1434, request to approve ordinance 1434 adopting an amendment to the future land use map in the city of Marshfield, 2017 to 2037 comprehensive plan. During proposed to change include most of the Daniels addition subdivision located to the west of Lincoln Avenue and Fourth Street intersection, presented by Bryce Hembrick, Hembrick City Planner.
Thank you, Mayor. So city staff often uses the comprehensive plan and more specifically the future land use plan when making recommendations and decisions on new development and zoning-related projects. Staff received two requests to change the future land use designation for two separate areas in the city. So we will discuss those two requests separately. So the first request, Jeremy Faber is requesting to change the future land use designation for the Daniels addition subdivision from low-density single-family residential to medium-density residential. I included the map in the staff report, but the subject area is located to the south of the first Presbyterian church on the west side of the city. The recommended density for the current designation, low-density single-family, is less than five dwelling units per acre and the recommended land use is single-family residential. Whereas the requested designation, which would be medium-density residential, you're targeting having about three to 10 units per acre and the recommended land uses would include single-family, two-family and townhouse. The applicant is interested in potentially developing this area and intends to provide several different types of residential land uses. He's also hoping to increase the density slightly that way he would be able to make it cost-effective. This has been a popular piece of property for prospective developers who are looking for almost shovel-ready property to build residential units on because Marshville does have a limited supply of available land for, you know, immediate development. The owner of the property has stated that he has attempted to sell his property, the land for over 10 years and has been unsuccessful due to the high costs and the high costs associated with developing this subdivision. So the developer and the applicant both believe that the current layout is not cost-effective and that increasing the density may help resolve this issue. So the applicant originally requested to change the designation for the entire subdivision. However, Plan Commission and city staff both recommended a different option and that can be found on attachment 1A. That is the recommended change that we're proposing. The latest housing study identified the need for new housing options and a variety of housing options and allowing for medium-density residential in this location may help to increase housing options in the west, you know, west side of the city and in the city and can potentially make a future development more cost-effective. It is important to note that this change would not automatically rezone any property or approve of proposed development. It just would help us to, when we make our decisions on what we want to recommend, we look at the future land use map and we can look and say, yes, you know, duplex would be appropriate here or single-family would be appropriate, et cetera. So this is just kind of the first step in order to, you know, potentially maybe have a development. The staff report provides, you know, much more information and so if you would like more information, please look at the staff report. Plan Commission recommended approving this request for the area shown on attachment A of the ordinance. This is the first reading and thus there is no action requested. There will be a public hearing and action scheduled for the June 9 Common Council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Bryce. Any questions from the council for Bryce? Mr. Wagner?
Bryce, he's going to be trying to put several different types of housing on that site. Is that correct? That's the plan now? I take it as you imagine? Did I?
It could be, yeah. So right now, right now it's zoned. I think it's SR4, which would basically just limit it to, or SR3 maybe, which would limit it to single-family residential. If he, if this gets, if the designation turns to medium-density, he may be able to do duplexes or potentially townhomes if that works out. So there is that potential, but he would still have to rezone before those developments would take place.
If I may, sure. The... The, was there a reason why you wouldn't want to have him do this as a planned unit development?
And he can still go through the planned unit development process. However, typically, it would help to have the future land use recommendations align with the proposed development. So right now, if he were to do a PUD with duplexes, we would probably say, as of right now, it probably wouldn't be suitable because it's recommended for low density, single family currently. So he could do that, it's just, it probably wouldn't be an easy approval if he were to try that.
One more question, Phil. Can you differentiate and more find the difference between an SR4 and a TR6?
Yeah, so SR4 would allow for a single family residential, and that's about it for residential. And it would also allow for, or it's kind of the target for four units per acre, whereas TR6 would allow for a single family residential, two flat, which is basically duplex, but one unit above the other. And then the third residential type that you can have there would be duplex as well. So TR6 would allow for a few more land uses, and it would also allow for a higher density of six units per acre.
And how did you determine that you wanted a lower density on this site?
When it was originally chosen for the future land use, is that what you're asking?
Yeah. Or how did you determine that SR4 would be a better choice, better fit?
Yeah, so in terms of the current zoning districts, historically, it's always been low density. I think it is actually SR3 instead of SR4, but it's always been low density, and this was decided during the 2013 citywide rezoning. And then we also did complete the 2017 comprehensive update. That's where that low density, future land use designation was determined, so that was through a public process. Josh was the one that kind of went through that, that was right before my time here. But basically, they talked with citizens on what they anticipated in that area, and since it was historically low density, single family, I'm guessing it just remained that way, due to probably, there probably wasn't much input on that specific area.
Thank you.
Mr. Whittle?
Thank you. Couple of questions. First of all, I'm questioning why the recommendation did not match the request, specifically the four properties on the west?
Yeah, so we talked it over with the applicant, and what we wanted was, because this was traditionally a historic, historically low density area, we wanted to kind of create a buffer between some of the other, you know, neighborhoods, so to the left, or to the west, sorry, that is very heavily single family, low density neighborhoods. And so we thought if we were to keep the four properties out of there, that would kind of create a little buffer. Whereas to the north, you have the church and a, I think there's also a house to the northeast. And then the east, to the east, there is a road, Lincoln, and then to the south, there are, I think, three properties. So we just thought it would be a nice little buffer to keep those as single family. And I think that the developer, the applicant would be more than okay with developing single family homes at those four locations anyway, so he was, he was fine with those recommendations.
But if you're doing a buffer on the west side there, those four, why would you not do a buffer on the four on the very south as well, the ones above four other properties?
And that, that could be something that we could do as well. We just thought that, we thought that it would be fine with how it was presented, but we can look into that, too.
Okay. And then the final question I have, it looks like you've got this, and I went to the city GIS map as well, and I see that those same properties are carved out in the future plan, looking there at that GIS viewer. Those are, you know, carved out, you've got essentially 19 properties in orange with four more in yellow there in that section. What you're proposing is the 19 in orange being rezoned or potentially planned to be future rezoned at some future time. If that was not rezoned, would that change the projected borders of those properties? Or if we did rezone that sometime down the road, would that change those future property divisions, or are those property divisions remaining? The only thing that we're allowing for are duplexes.
I don't know if I 100% understand the question, but the property alignment, as of right now, would stay. Now, depending on what the developer would want to do with the project, they may change. As of, if you guys were to change the designation now, you would have to rezone, and then if you wanted to do like a PUD or group development, then the property lines may change. So generally, right now, with this change, it's more of designating the area rather than the specific parcel. So I don't know if that might have answered the question, I'm not too sure.
Well, I guess it'll have to do for now. Thanks.
Okay, sorry.
Tom?
Okay. Too many, Tom. Okay, that property was platted when it was originally opened on Sycamore Street there, and so all those parcels were platted in that initial plat, and the streets were platted. So if there's any changes to that, you could probably do small CSM changes, like one to three lots, but the, ultimately, there might be a request at some point in the future to vacate a portion of the plat or modify street locations or something, but they'll have to go through the common council again and through the Plan Commission before that can actually happen.
Thank you. Any further questions from the council? All right, seeing none, we'll go on to item N, first reading of ordinance number 1435, amendment to the future land use map in the city of Marshfield, 2017 to 2037 comprehensive plan. The area proposed to be changed is located on Peach Avenue between East Side Circle Drive and East 25th Street, presented by Bryce Hembrick, City Planner.
Thank you, Mayor. So this request is also looking to change the future land use designation from low density residential to medium density residential, but this time, it would be four properties along South Peach Avenue, in between East Side Circle and 25th Street. Applicant is interested in, you know, potentially being able to have the option to build a duplex on his property. Originally, he wanted to rezone to TR6, however, with it being, you know, currently as low density, single family, it wasn't likely that that rezoning would pass. So prior to the citywide rezoning change in 2013, these properties were all zoned SR4, low density, single, and two family district, which allowed for single family and two family residences. So if you were to drive along that strip of South Peach, you'll see, I think there's about three or four duplexes located in close proximity. There are also several properties in between 21st and 25th Street, along Peach, that are designated for medium density residential. So we thought that due to those reasons, we, city staff recommended to approve the request, and also mainly because historically, this area was designated as an area that was appropriate for medium density residential dwellings. And so Plan Commission also recommended to approve the request for the area shown on attachment A of the ordinance. This is the first reading, and thus there is no action requested at this time. However, there will be a public hearing and action scheduled for the June 9 Common Council meeting for the next meeting. Thanks.
Thank you, Bryce. Any questions for Bryce? Mr. Wagner?
Thank you, Mayor. Bryce, I took a look at this, and when I saw this coming from the Plan Commission, it didn't seem to make much sense to me. And I went out there and I looked at the area, and a couple things. Number one is that there aren't a lot of, there aren't really a lot of duplexes in this area. The only one that is in the area now that you're recommending or that you're looking at is the one that's on the corner of 21st and Peach. That would be on the southeast corner of 21st and Peach. That's the only one that's out there right now. The other duplexes that I did find were along 29th Street, and even though you show a lot of the area zoned for high density residential on the map, there's existing properties on there that are all single family residential. In fact, the thing that got me about this is that whole, the strip that you've got in the crosshatch on your exhibit, basically, that is all, that is all developed, single family housing. There is only one lot that is not developed out there, and that's the one that they're asking for the change, for the thing, but you're changing the whole thing for it. I think, basically, if this were to go through, in allowing the duplex to go on there, it would be almost the equivalent of spot zoning, because we're essentially doing this for one person, for one lot. And I don't think that's, that's appropriate, and I don't think, I, and of course, I don't think it fits with the existing neighborhood. Years ago, on our experience on the Plan Commission, we had some go rounds about adult family homes in this area. There are a lot of adult family homes in this area, as you probably know. And of course, the rule of the, what is it called, the Fair Housing Amendment, and the Americans with disability don't give the city much options. If somebody requests a CBRF or an adult family home in any area, it must go there. Our restrictions on it can be very little. There are like five of them in this area. There are like five of them where we're at here. And we had quite a struggle with the residents on that area years ago about those things going in there because they were increasing the density of the neighborhood. I just can't see this thing going in here, and when this thing comes back to us, I intend to oppose it. Thank you.
If I could follow up with that?
Please.
Yeah, so I have the GIS pulled up right now, and it looks like we actually have four duplexes between 21st and 25th, but there's only basically two of those that are actually on Peach. The other ones are coming off 21st and 25th. So, yeah, for the most part, you're correct, but I just wanted to, in the area, there's a couple. And this is, once again, this is not a rezoning, this is for the comprehensive plan. The rest of the areas to the north, those are already, you know, identified as being medium density, so we thought that it would be appropriate just to make that whole strip medium density. You are correct, there is very few vacant parcels that are available there. However, you know, if you were to allow for, if you were to make this designation change, and then someone wanted to rezone to TR6, they could be allowed to, or TR6 or SR6, they could be allowed to do like a two flat where they could do one unit above the other, or, you know, build a twin home, which is basically a, it looks like a duplex, but the property lines are splitting one, one from the other. So I just kind of wanted to cover that, just because it wouldn't necessarily mean that if you approved this, that there would be a duplex that would go in that one spot, and that's the only thing that changed. It could open up some other opportunities, I don't know how likely they would be, but...
Mr. Hamler?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate you giving me the floor. I do agree with Mr. Wagner about spot zoning. Marshall has a history of that, and I really don't appreciate some of these things. And who is the individual that owns this property?
It would be Keith Stride.
Oh, maybe we should reorganize the thing for a fifth district.
Mr. Mayor?
And if I could just maybe?
Just one second, just one second. I'd appreciate it if council members would keep proper decorum. There's no room for that kind of statement. Mr. Hamler? Mr. Wagner, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I did, sir. Is the mic on? Yes, okay, thank you. You know, the other thing, Bryce, I think, one thing that's bothering me is that there is a, there are a whole bunch of new single family houses that have gone in on Peachtree Court, Peachtree Drive or Circle, and I don't know if a lot of people know this, but that was, that was originally a city subdivision, and we started out that way. And the intent was to preserve that area for single family housing. And I just don't, I just do not want to see, I do not want to see this opened up to duplexes and change the character of that neighborhood. They've worked really hard to get that neighborhood, it's a beautiful neighborhood now, I love it, I drive through there just to look at it sometime. But, you know, I really don't want to see that density increased in this neighborhood. And I, this is one that I will probably oppose.
Thank you. Anyone further from the, Bryce?
I follow up on that. You know, I definitely think, Mr. Wagner, your ideas or your thoughts are definitely, you know, I like, I definitely agree with your thoughts. The one thing that I do want to clarify, though, is, and I think maybe if Pat could step in, with spot zoning, part of the reason why we recommended that he should change the future land use map first, before just rezoning to TR6, was because we probably would have considered that to be a spot zoning if, if it wasn't being recommended in the future land use map. So this is kind of the process to avoid technically a spot zoning. That's kind of how I saw it. I don't know, Pat, if, did I get that correct?
Pat?
Yeah, I mean, I think that for technical purposes, that would avoid the spot zoning. I don't think that Mr. Wagner was referring to it as being illegal per se, but, but the concept of what we're doing becomes the issue, and that, of course, would be up to policy in the body. But I do think what you're proposing would avoid that legal question from the standpoint of being a technically illegal spot zoning. The concept is, of course, surrounding all of this, but I think you would avoid it being illegal.
Okay. Mr. Wagner?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Pat. That's true, I wasn't claiming it to be illegal, but I do recognize this as sort of a backdoor entrance to, to avoid the spot zoning. So, yeah, I agree with you, it's not illegal now, but I do think it is a technique to avoid the spot zoning and still accomplish spot zoning. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? All right, seeing none, we will move on to item O, first reading of ordinance number 1436, request by Michael Kennely to rezone the property located at 3214 Manville Lane, parcel 250-2602-2531002, from CMU, Community Mixed Use, to NMU, Neighborhood Mixed Use, presented by Bryce Hembrick, City Planner.
Thank you, Mayor. So the subject property is located in the northwest part of the city, and is located near the intersection of Veterans Parkway and Mann Road. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property from community mixed use to neighborhood mixed use, and is interested in converting the former Jehovah's Witness Church into a single family residence. A single family residence is not currently permitted in the CMU zoning district, and thus needed to be rezoned. The subject property is located in the general commercial district in the future land use plan. This district identifies the general location of areas where redevelopment, retail development, offices, lodging, and other similar commercial uses are appropriate for this district. So the property is currently zoned CMU, and this district is intended to permit a wide range of those commercial and retail, you know, land uses. Given the recommendation of the future land use map and the location of the subject property along Veterans Parkway, CMU was considered to be the most ideal zoning district designation, according to staff. We believe that that was the most ideal zoning district. Requested zoning district, Neighborhood Mixed Use, the district intended to permit residential development and small scale commercial uses compatible with adjacent residential uses and neighborhood character. So the subject property is located in a predominantly residential area with existing single family homes directly to the northwest, which are zoned CMU, and southeast zoned SR4, and Mobile Home Park zoned MH8 to the north. As I mentioned, the surrounding area is currently residential, however, according to the future land use map, it identifies all the properties from the intersection of Veterans Parkway and Mann Road to the city limits to the northwest as intended for commercial use, as seen on the future land use map in the packet. So although the area is currently residential, the intent, according to the plan, was to transform these properties into commercial properties, you know, in the future at some point. So because staff relies heavily on the recommendations of future land use map, and thus, city staff recommended denying the request because the property was already zoned for what we consider to be the ideal zoning district. However, in our Plan Commission staff report, we also presented some counter arguments as to why the request could be approved, and so we provided that information. Some of those examples include, number one, the property is located in a predominantly residential area, and the proposed use, single family residential, would be compatible land use with the surrounding existing land uses. The second would be that the exterior of the building is not proposed to change, so although the building would serve as a residential dwelling in it, the building would still appear... the building would still appear as a church. This could make it more desirable for commercial uses, you know, to maybe move in down the road in the future without having to make any major renovations. And third, the proposed zoning district still allows for some commercial land uses, just not the same, you know, variety as the current zoning district. So with that said, the plan commission decided that the rezoning to, that rezoning to the NMU zoning district would be consistent with the recommendations of the comprehensive plan and with the existing surrounding land uses and thus recommended approving the request. This is the first reading, so there is no requested action. The second and final reading will take place at the June 9th Common Council Meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Bryce. Any questions from the council? All right, seeing none, we will move on to item P. Request to approve resolution number 2020-18, amending the official map to remove a proposed future right-of-way located between the intersection of Peach Avenue and East 14th Street, the intersection of Felker Avenue and East 8th Street, presented by Bryce Hembrick, City Planner.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make this one much quicker than the others. According to the official map, there is currently a proposed future right-of-way that extends from the intersection of Peach and 14th and the intersection of Felker and 8th Street. A street is unlikely to be constructed at this location unless there is no longer a need to designate this as a future potential right-of-way. The plan commission recommended approval of the change and thus the recommendation is to approve resolution number 2018-18. This item does require a public hearing that we had earlier, so. That is all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve resolution number 2020-18? Motion by Mr. Whittles or second? Second by Mr. Rosendich? Any discussion? Mr. Whittle?
Just out of curiosity, how many houses would be raised if we ever put a road through there?
If we were to ever put a road through there?
Yes.
Probably in the 10 to 15 range without looking.
Yep, thanks. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Fire?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Rosendich?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Whittle?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Buskey?
Yes.
And Henler?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Item Q. Request to approve resolution number 2020-15, special assessments for the Cleveland Street Reconstruction Project, presented by Tom Turchi, City Engineer.
All right. Resolution 2020-15 is for 312241, street construction 312242, water main and sewer service laterals, 316777 for storm sewer, 352144 for sanitary sewer and service laterals for Cleveland Street, central to Daggy Street, Chestnut Avenue from Cleveland Street to Blodges Street, Oak Avenue from Cleveland Street to Blodges Street, and Pine Avenue from Cleveland Street to Blodges Street. My recommendation is to approve resolution 2020-15.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve resolution 2020-15? Motion by Mr. Budke? Is there a second? Second by Mr. Fisher? Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Henler?
Yes.
Buskey?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Whittle?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Rosendich?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
And Fire?
Yes.
Thank you. Item R. Report on status of the Aquatic Center, including the discussion of possible next steps regarding remaining project fundraising, presented by Justin Casperson, Parks and Rec Director.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yep.
I have some exciting news to go over tonight. We do have naming rights donor for the pool. Someone has come forward to secure naming rights for the pool, which is very exciting. Gets us to 2.5 million in private fundraising dollars. They need to get some things in order on their end before they make their name public and we'll work with them when that time comes. They were hoping sometime this summer they would make their name public, but they needed to get a few things in order. But they really wanted me to make the announcements to get those individuals or organizations or businesses who were considering giving to the pool to consider a little bit stronger over the next few months. So I'm very excited to announce that we now have a naming right donor for the pool for this year. Not for this year, for the pool for many, many years. And if you guys recall, a couple months ago, there was some discussion on how do we recognize these quasi-government type organizations and whether we would view their money as either being private or public dollars. Right now, we're at about 85% of our fundraising goal. We can go out and try to solicit those dollars over the next few weeks and months to kind of get that to 3 million, but we'd like to open that up or maybe put a finger in the wind to see what the council's temperament is on that discussion because the direction was to go out and find more money and then come back to the discussion, come back to the council for more discussion on that. So I guess we can take it anyway. Mayor, if you want to ask the questions or comments or see what direction they want to go.
Questions from the council. Mr. Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I'm going to give a response to you that would probably make Hap proud, and that is, it depends. And the reason for that is the, I think it depends on where the quasi-public organization receives its income. If they're, if they're receiving it from a public source, say, room tax or some other fee or service that is paid in the name of the city to the organization, that I would, I would consider that to be public money. But I think if they have at least, I'm going to make a wild guess here, and they have at least 50% of their annual revenue coming from sources that are not through the city, then I would consider it private money. That's, that's the distinction I would make on it. I watched the debate you guys had on that was before the election. And I think somebody else made that debate, that distinction too. Might have been Mr. Budke, I don't recall. But anyway, that's the distinction that I mentally make on it. And I don't know where anybody else falls on that issue.
It was a very good point along those lines is at that time, we were down around, I believe, 1.1 or 1.2 million raised. And it was too early to start thinking about these other types of sources. There was the Marshfield Utility, the UDB had interest. And the council's direction at that time is, let's not go, let's not go to these too quick. Come back when you're at 80 to 90% and let's see if we can help you get over the hump. So we're at 2.5, we're, you know, what is that? I don't know, what is that, 85%?
83.
83. So we're in the 80s. And so it's basically up to the council on if you want us to go down that route or if you would approve going down that route or just want us to stay out with the public. Mr. Whittle?
Thank you. It's a challenging situation with the current environment we're in with pandemic. I think donors may be a little bit more difficult to find based on that. So that concerns me. But at the same time, I also sort of expect that as much as we've done to try to keep this pool at 6 million, that we're going to find it goes a little bit more and it might be nice if we could privately raise the 3 million and then hopefully get a little extra from those organizations that would cap off whatever was over and about because I don't know what kind of appetite this body's going to have with, with making sure that the project is done completely, fully as is planned at this point. So sort of on the fence. I do understand and appreciate the incredible hard work that the organizations have put into raising the funds that have been raised. My hat's off to you. I don't think it's even been a year and we've got an incredible process going here. It's going to be tough to get any more, I think, but I kind of would like to see us at least try.
Mr. Budke?
Yeah, I think we should keep going. I believe that there's still going to be people out there to give towards this. And let's, you can set a date if that's what somebody wants to do and then we can talk about the city doing it. But I really believe that it's out there and people will help out with this. Don't give up yet.
Mr. Whittle?
What was that? One quick question, Justin. The naming rights of the Aquatic Center have now been claimed. Are there other significant pieces that have potential naming rights that would maybe tempt somebody into providing some additional funding?
Yes, so we, you and I talked about not allowing, getting your name out there quite yet, Tom. So we're going to wait on the Whittle Water Park for a little bit. But there are opportunities for naming rights. We do have a number of items that have significant dollar amounts that we'll keep pursuing. I just want to take the opportunity to kind of acknowledge this great donation from this wonderful family that's going to give to the project. And you, like you said, Tom, with the economy the way it is, it's just wonderful that this family found this ability to give the money and this is a great thing. I just wanted to also take the opportunity to say, hey, we'll put the finger in the wind and see where we're at with the council's temperament because I think those groups may ask me to come back and talk to them. And I want to be able to honestly say this is where we're at and this is what we're doing. So this is good information to have so we can go out and continue to privately fundraise. And we're not, we're not going to give up till we get to that 3 million.
Justin, can I ask you just a question about the, if we are this close to it, it's clear the council's direction is keep raising funds, which is fine. But the question becomes, in the current situation that we're in, would we get better pricing and bids on overall less expensive project if we were able to put it out to bid, say, in late summer, early fall?
Yeah, so we have a design team that's made up of Iconica heirs, former heirs, and Bozen Company. I asked Joe from the Bozen Company to phone in to kind of provide any information that I might be lacking. But according to Bozen and a lot of the companies, the construction industry is becoming competitive, meaning the prices are coming down as the economy is kind of taking a turn. So back to your question, the mayor, yes. In a nutshell, we would probably save money by getting more favorable bids now with better weather. But we're also at 2.5, not 3 million. Joe, is that accurate? Joe's on the line right now.
Yes, that's accurate.
And when you say, so when you say more favorable, what does that mean? So in other words, is it $5 more favorable? Is it 50,000, 100,000? What number are we looking at?
Joe, do you have kind of a feel what type of savings can be had with our earlier start?
That's, that's difficult right now, but we, you know, we are looking at a number of things that are more favorable to the project, like better weather conditions for site prep versus going into the winter. Do you remember what it was like last fall where it rained and rained and rained? We're counting on proper moisture for the, for proper compaction of reusing existing soils on site and some green areas and things. And it's very, it's very effective when, when we don't have the right weather. Also, getting whatever we can done prior to winter conditions. So we'd be saving some money on the, on the pool vessels themselves as well as the building by getting it up prior to winter construction. We're also, you know, right now, we're losing two years on the pool this summer from COVID and next summer for construction if we delay the start. Yeah, people are looking for work. The bidding environment is right out there now. Another, a couple other things is that right now, you know, we've, as a group, we've been talking about some of the maintenance items for the pool. And if, if the pool isn't open, those maintenance items don't have to be finished on a pool that we are eventually going to tear down. The summer's, you know, Justin hasn't confirmed yet, but, and maybe it's up to the group here, but, you know, is that pool going to open or not? I mean, if it's not going to open, the budget that's set aside to run that facility this summer, you know, that could be saved as well and moved into the, into the project budget. I talked about good weather. Another thing that is really important to the construction team is finding ways to, to, to get the original turf to come back for stormwater management. Otherwise, they have to put additional devices around the site to do that. Overall, you know, this allows a jumpstart on, you know, with nice weather, saving some winter conditions and allows us to get the site back building up to grade so that we're ready for, you know, the buildings and the best.
So either Justin or Joe, so let's, let me ask this question then. If you're saying that there would be better, more favorable bids, is it going to be any different if we revisit this in a month after the committee has had time to go out and continue to see if we can still get to that $3 million? And then come back to the council a month from now? Is that going to change anytime that you all would be able to get started? So we have more favorable bids?
It will. We were hoping on, we were hoping on completing bid packages here in June and starting in July with the scenario that Justin was, you know, late July with contract. At the latest, would be into August starting.
So if you got a, if something happened to where the first week of July, you were able to do that, would you be able to start at that time? Or is that too soon?
I think we couldn't start in July at this point. We, there'd be too much approvals at this point. We would have to go out to bid and then solicit those bids and then award them. It'd take some, it'd take at least 30 to 45 days, Joe, right? To start to finish?
Correct. You know, there's nothing saying that the bid packages couldn't be put out there. We gather them and I say bid package.
I think we lost Joe.
Oh.
Joe, are you there?
Everyone is virtual, please check your phones.
Tab, you need to end that call.
How do I know what the phone I did?
Yeah, I don't think it's mine.
I thought most of them. Oh, somebody hung.
There it is.
So it sounds like, since we really don't have any really concrete on if there's a benefit or if there isn't, just continue to, to fundraise. Is that the general direction from the council? Yes? All right. Thank you very much. Item S. Item S, a report on staff's proposed plans to reopen the city buildings and facilities presented by Steve Barge, City Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the board will do this if it's okay, you know, following up on your directive back on May 12th that we come back to with a plan for opening city facilities and buildings. It's just to walk through each of the sections of the document that I sent to you. It's a five-page document, but the first page is simply a cover sheet. Looking at all the names of the people who are on this call, I believe that pretty much everybody's represented in terms of department and division head. So I'm just gonna go briefly through just the highlights of each section and then look for you to have any questions or concerns. And like I said, the, the individual in charge of that particular department or division should be able to jump on and, and address those ideas and concerns. So anyway, the first one is Marshfield Utilities. You see about half a dozen or so bullet points. The ones I would mention are that the office will remain closed to the public until further notice. That's by the decision of the Utilities Commission. Starting on June 1st, if needed, they'll have a limited number of pre-scheduled appointments available for the unique type situations, the mayor writes, that cannot be handled by phone. And otherwise, they, they continue to encourage people to reach them through other means, phone, email, website, and there's phone numbers both during the day and after hours that people can contact with regular questions and, of course, emergency situations that come up overnight. That's the same way that it's always been. So any questions on where Marshfield Utilities is at right now?
Doesn't, any questions from the council? Doesn't appear to be, Steve.
Okay, thanks.
I'm sorry, Mr. Whittle. Mr. Whittle, there's his hand.
Just a quick question on this. I realize that utility is publicly owned and they run by a separate commission and all that. Do we, as a council, really have a lot of influence on that particular entity? Or is that sort of they're doing their own business the way that they feel is best?
I think that maybe I'd look to the city attorney to comment on that one. Obviously, the commission under state statute, you know, has been authorized by state, by city code as well to have some powers and authorities, but could you take that one?
Yeah, by code, we do authorize the commission to conduct that business to, so to a certain extent, the commission is, does have control over opening and how the business is gonna be run. I think there would be maybe a little bit different argument as to the public building structure, but as far as it operating as, you know, in terms of day-to-day operations, I think that does fall to the commission.
Thank you. Nick, as long as you're on the call with us here, is there any indication of what may someday be a trigger for the reopening of offices to the public? Or is it just gonna be something that the commission will revisit when they have their regular meetings?
Hold on, Nick. We can't hear you. Still can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. At this point, it's really, we're monitoring, as many of you know, we're not doing disconnects and late payments on customers by order of the Public Service Commission. They have a meeting later this week where they're going to take a look at that and provide guidance back to the utilities. So I think that's probably one of the linchpins that we're watching and monitoring to determine on when we may open up. I think, you know, one of the big things that we've considered as we've gone through this, and, you know, many of you have seen the video of our tour of our facility when we went through the building plan a few months ago, at least those that have been on the commission or on the council for a while. And as many of you know, our facility is very small in the office area where customers come in. And I think that's the biggest concern, is just protecting the safety and health of the customers, you know, providing that social distancing is not an easy thing to do with how we're laid out and how we have there. And ultimately, during the past two months, you know, we've been able to serve customers, like you mentioned, through the other means, and that's been working effectively as the customers are still paying their bills and they're calling us and asking questions, and we're able to work through almost all, if not all of, all of those situations.
All right, Steve, up to you.
Okay, yeah, all right, thanks. Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, and wastewater, as we, you probably know, the wastewater division doesn't get a lot of visitors in a typical week. Their intent is to open the facilities back up. That's not a big change. They, they really weren't all that closed on per se. When they have customers come to the office, they will issue personal protective equipment to any residents if they want to come and discuss their personal concerns. No plant tours will occur at this time. And the reference in your plan that I've handed out says until Phase 3 of the Safer Home Guidelines are reached. And I know that I've received some questions and comments today about, about that since the Safer Home Order was struck down by the State Supreme Court and the, you know, the Badger bump back or whatever it's called, the bounce back was tied to that. But it was still a referencing in some of these plans that you see with respect to when it may be appropriate to allow certain levels of groups of people to congregate and to be at certain events, activities, and venues. So that's why the reference is made there. And then finally, just the business operation of the wastewater division will be returning to pre-COVID-19 status. Any questions?
Nope.
Okay. Moving on to street. Street Division will resume its normal operations on June 1st with all crew members reporting back to the city garage. You may recall for four weeks, starting in late March and running through the latter part of April, they were working on a different schedule to try and minimize the possibility of, of an outbreak across the entire crew of COVID-19 infections. And we're grateful that that was something that was acceptable to, to the city officials. School tours have been canceled for the year. There'll be no other tours this summer. And that, those are really, I would say, the highlights of what's going on in streets with respect to resuming operations.
Questions from the council? Seeing none? Go ahead, Steve.
Okay, thank you. For fire, the vestibule and lobby will remain open for visitors and deliveries with precautions put in place. A number of their services are being sort of phased in over time according to this plan. By mid-June, the plan is to partner with Wood County Health officials to resume the Car Seat Clinic. That's a fairly popular program. Also, at that same time, they'll be looking at resuming routine fire inspections. That'll be based upon the business community's willingness to allow that, given their comfort level of allowing our inspectors to be in those facilities. By mid to late July, they expect to look at restarting external public education events. And then by later in July into mid-August, they may reopen for tours and, but that will be with some personal protective measures put in place as well, having groups of people going through the station. Any questions on the fire department?
Mr. Wagner?
Steve, are they running full shifts now? I mean, are they, are they still running the same? Oh, there he is. Can I direct that to Chief Owen? Chief Owen, are you still running full shifts right now? And what are you, what are you doing? Are you doing spacing or distancing or something like that to make it work?
Yeah, so, right, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, I can.
Okay. So, yeah, our shifts have remained the same ever since the start. We have participation for signing the calls, making a call in the sync, plays a part when we do meetings and everything, but basically, our internal operations are the, not a job, significant.
If I can follow up, so essentially, you, you feel like that you've been running pretty much the safest way you possibly can and still respond to emergencies with the, with the crews that you've got now?
Yes.
And that will, that will continue with this phase in, the special curricular activities, if I can use that word?
Yeah, correct. The way that we've been operating has been very good for us. It's been very effective, safe, and we're gonna continue that until, you know, we'll see what happens. We're still gonna follow Wood County Health and CDC guidelines, but right now, the plan is to slowly start implementing things. Routine fire inspections are gonna be one of the first things, but we have got some new information today from the state fire inspectors that may delay that a little bit. Deputy Chief Letty is following up with that, but for the most part, phasing this stuff in is, is the plan.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Anyone else from the council? All right, seeing none, go on, Steve.
Okay, thank you. On the next page, with police, the public access to the lobby has been maintained throughout COVID-19. They haven't shut that down during the last couple of months. That will continue. In the coming weeks, they do believe that they'll be looking at receiving prescription med drop-offs and resuming fingerprints. Until further notice, no tours will be given, nor will the public be allowed into the restricted areas for meetings and other activities. And then one item that I'm adding that wasn't on your plan that I distributed, and that relates to the police officers being on a different schedule, you remember, we approved that through a memorandum of understanding a little ways ago. Well, normal, normal officer schedules will resume this Sunday, May 31st. They'll be back to the regular schedule at that time. I don't see Chief Rams on this call right now, but I'll try and address any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Steve? All right, nope.
Okay, moving on to library. You see a lot of bullet points, so I'm not gonna cover them all. We have Lori Balangi on the phone to, to address any questions you might have. But just hitting the highlights, more toward the top of the list, the target date for reopening is this Friday, May 29th. It's contingent on several things designed to provide for maximum health and safety of the staff and of customers, patrons of the library, including physical distance signage, masks for customers, cleaning training for staff, those type of things. The hours will be weekdays from Monday to Friday, 9:00 to noon, 1:00 to 4:00, and 5:00 to 8:00. And you may say, well, there's gaps in there. Lori can explain, but the intent is to have that hour in between those time slots for cleaning, to, to do the best job possible of cleaning and sanitizing the facility. Saturday hours will be 9:00 to noon and 1:00 to 4:00, with that noon to 1:00 time also provided for, for cleaning the facility to some degree, to try and promote the most healthy and safe environment possible. And the pickup window will be open from 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM on weekdays, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Saturdays. They will be limiting the number of visitors during each open period of the library to try and, again, promote social distancing. And the customers will be encouraged to do several things. Social distance, wear a mask, wash or sanitize hands before and after computer use, and ask library staff for help to get the materials for them. So that's just a portion of the bullet points under the plan. You saw a very good and thorough 10-page program that was submitted by Lori on behalf of herself and the library board, and I'm sure she would accept any questions at this time.
Questions from the council? Mr. Whittle?
Just a quick question. Children under the age of eight accompanied by adult, that seems somewhat of an arbitrary age.
Actually, it's not. That's a good question, Tom, and we kind of anticipated that age eight is kind of a developmental age where, where children begin to develop that idea of reasoning and can hang on to a memory. And we, we are thinking that, not thinking, evidence shows that kids younger than that, if they're not accompanied by an adult, are likely to just congregate together and not be able to keep that distance that we want people to have. So with a parent in, in presence, we think that's gonna go much better.
Thank you.
A parent or an adult.
Any further questions? Seeing none? Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, before I leave this, it occurs to me that this may possibly be the, the last council meeting that Lori attends. Maybe, maybe I'm wrong, maybe June 9th is still gonna be on her radar, but I just want to publicly congratulate her in front of the council and everyone. I, I tried to give her some kudos at a recent staff meeting, but in the nine years I've been here, she's just been a wonderful person to work with, so professional, so personable, just does a great job with that facility, and so let's give her a little love, thanks here right now, if we could.
Thank you.
And wish, wish her well as she moves into retirement here shortly as well. Moving on to City Hall, you see the target date for reopening is this coming Monday to and first. Put down some things we're working on. We had a good staff meeting today among the City Hall department heads and went through some of these items, but again, you know, without necessarily reading them all, they're, they're designed to try and, as best we can, promote and protect the safety of our staff and our employees. We are looking at installing the temporary, in fact, they've been installed now, the temporary plexiglass barriers for the customer service staff, so they have those in front of them when they have customers approaching them, controlling the number of people who can come into that customer service area, coming through that second set of doors. We're gonna really work to actively encourage the public to continue to use our services remotely. One of the things I understand that, that we have seen that's been real positive during the last few weeks is that more people are connecting with us through website, Facebook, email, and other ways that may otherwise have come to the building. So hopefully, they're gonna see that for their own benefit as well as ours, it's, it's very positive to conduct business remotely as a citizen. We'll be conducting our recruitment activities remotely until further notice for interviewing and hiring. And down toward the bottom, you see some notes about minimum staffing. I want to make sure that when the public comes into this building, you know, we've been having a lot of people work remotely, that the public comes in and they expect to talk to someone about whatever their issue is and whatever department, that, that there are people here on any given day who can help them. So we're gonna make sure that we absolutely have that covered. But, but talking with staff today, it appears that we're pulling together that most everybody will be returning to City Hall soon who's been working remotely. I think remote work has been a good thing for us, but, you know, we're moving back for full operations on site. Any questions on anything with reopening City Hall?
Questions from the council? Seeing none? Go ahead and proceed.
Okay. Our next area is park and recreation. Again, there's a lot of bullet points. In fact, there's a page and a half on this, so I'm just gonna kind of skirt through them fairly quickly. Justin Casperson is online to address any questions or concerns you might have. But the playgrounds are to reopen tomorrow, Wednesday, May 27th. As far as the Wildwood Zoo and Welcome Center, plan is to reopen the Wildwood Zoo and Restrooms on Monday, June 1st. And then the Welcome Center, when the state enters into Phase 2 of the Badger Bounce Back, I have a hard time saying that phrase for some reason, or if there's further direction received from other agencies. Second Street Community Center, plan is to reopen the park and recreation offices to the public on Monday, June 1st. The Senior Center would resume activities when the state enters Phase 2 of that Badger Bounce Back Plan. We will work with the tenants, and there are several of them, you know, in the Second Street Community Center, to, to get them back into their locations and help them with their reopening plans. Why don't I, that's three areas. Why don't I stop there before I go on to several other facilities?
Mr. Wagner?
Yeah, thank you. Steve, or maybe, maybe Justin has a better handle on this, if you don't mind. Several times in, in your recommendations, you talked about the Badger Bounce Back Plan, and of course, it doesn't exist anymore, and we understand that, but there were things that, had it existed, would have been triggers. What kind of triggers are you looking at? Let's say for, you're talking about the Welcome Center at the zoo and the Second Street Community Center, what they called Phase 2. What would Phase 2 have been, and what standards do they have to meet before you will actually open them up?
Yeah, I can take that, Steve. I talked to Sue from the County Health Department, who said that the Badger Bounce Back Plan is still in effect, and the Department of Human Services or Health Services is still administering it as a tool for businesses and agencies to reopen up. So I was told that the Badger Bounce Back Plan is still being administered by the state and is still being used as a tool for organizations to use, if they so choose to use that as a tool.
So what would, what would be those, what would be the, the benchmark where you would open up the Welcome Center at the zoo?
It would be based on those criteria listed in Phase 2 of the Badger Bounce Back Plan. I can pull them up if you'd like.
If you don't have them, I'm not gonna hold up the council.
Justin, maybe you can do that while I start going through the next section and then, because there's references to Phase 2 and other things as well, I believe. So then you can jump in anytime. Is that okay? Yep. Okay. I see other hands, so.
Please, I'm sorry, Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a comment into something you said, Justin. I made some calls today, just to clarify for myself, more about the Badger Bounce Back Plan, and I called some of our legislators at the state, and I think the key word you used is if businesses and organizations so choose to use it. Right now, the Badger Bounce Back Plan, for lack of a better word, has lost some of its bounce because it's no longer enforceable. It is something that is simply considered guidelines and encouragement to do. So I just want to make sure we're all clear that it does exist, but only more in an encouragement basis. Thank you.
Anyone else from the council? No? Okay, keep going, Steve.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Yeah, Hefco Pool reopened when the state enters Phase 2 of the Badger Bounce Back Plan, and again, right now, Justin is looking that up, that that's the same phase that was referenced in a couple of other items earlier in the park and recreation section. And then consider closing Hefco Pool for the summer and proceed forward to construction of the new aquatic center to open in the summer of 2021. There was a little bit of discussion of that during the last item, so I'll just kind of leave that one out there. And then Justin also noted that if a decision was made to open Hefco Pool, there'd be a substantial increase in training of seasonal staff and some other things. I believe he's also noted that finding staffing might take a little bit of work since other employers have already gobbled up some of the potential employees. But he's indicating that if that was council's directive, that the earliest that could occur would be Saturday, June 20th. I'll go through a couple more sections while he's looking up the Phase 2. Oak Avenue Community Center, plan is to...
Steve, hang on one second. Mr. Whittle?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking down.
A quick question, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Of the staffing that, the seasonal staffing that we have for the pool, Justin, I'm assuming a large quantity, or a large number of those people are probably youth, teenagers? Is that an accurate assessment?
Yes, almost all of them.
So we'd be relying on, on teenagers to provide the extra... So we'd be relying on on teenagers to provide the extra training or the extra cleaning, sanitation, and those types of things as well?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Steve.
Okay, thank you. Oak Avenue Community Center, plan would be to allow tenants to access their spaces tomorrow, May 27th, allow renters to use the building for their activities and private rentals only on Monday, June 1st. We'd be trying to discourage any public rentals yet at this time, and we'd want to restrict rentals to one use per day. We want to make sure that when the facility is rented out, that there's ample time for the staff to clean and sanitize the space, so that we can do the best job again of protecting public health. And then athletic fields, allow user groups to use the fields for practices and league games as of tomorrow, May 27th, again, asking that they adhere to CDC and WEDC guidelines for their events. We look at removing bleachers where possible to avoid close spectator seating, and hosting tournaments when the state enters into Phase Three of the Badger Bounce Back Plan. And again, when Justin has that plan in front of him, we can talk about what what the metrics would be for Phase Three. Having gone through those three areas, I guess I'll stop and see if there's any questions from council, and perhaps Justin is is pulling up at this time the the bounce back guidelines for the various phases.
Questions from the council. Doesn't appear to be any.
I, I- Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
I do have the Badger Bounce Back Plan up on my computer screen. There's a probably, probably 15 different criterias that talk about the different phases between Phase One, Phase Two, and Phase Three, and the measuring criteria involved. So I can either share that with you directly, so you guys can open up the computers yourself, or I could go through them. It's kind of a, it's six pages of information.
Mr. Wagner.
Justin, if you would be kind enough to email that out to us, I won't hold up the council waiting to read through it.
I will do that right now.
Thank you.
Yeah, Steve, I'm sorry, I thought Justin was going to-
That's okay, I wasn't sure if I was supposed to continue. Okay, on the last page end of my report, under Cemetery, a plan would be to reopen cemetery offices to the public during regular hours on Monday, June 1st, and of course, those who are at the Second Street Community Center now, as we've made that structural change to how cemetery is operated. For the fairgrounds, we allow the Wisconsin State Fair Board to decide whether or not rentals, events, or activities may occur on the property. Again, directing that they please adhere to any guidelines that are appropriate. For building and building rentals, we'd allow renters to use the facilities as of Monday, June 1st for activities and private rentals. Once again, we'd be trying to discourage rentals that are open to the public yet at this time. And once again, we'd be looking to limit rentals to one use per day whenever possible to give that ample time for cleaning and sanitizing. Wenzel Family Plaza, the water fountain or water feature, as we sometimes refer to it, would be reopened when the state enters into Phase One of the Badger Bounce Back Plan. And I'm not sure that hasn't happened yet, because I I've heard some discussion that Phase One may be close to being achieved. Again, I defer to the criteria that Justin has looked up. Allow the Wenzel Family Plaza Committee to decide whether rentals, events, or activities may occur, again, recommending that those activities be held, subject to the appropriate guidelines, and then work with them on any extra sanitation efforts or other expenses, realizing there may be extra cost. Again, the Wenzel Family Plaza has been a very popular amenity for the city in the last one full and one partial summer, and we'd sure like to see it continue to be to be used to the greatest extent possible, given the the health issues that we need to deal with. And then finally, under Large Community Special Events, encourage groups to host large community special events only when the state enters into Phase Three of the Badger Bounce Back Plan. One of the questions I've been involved in lately has been this idea about what if it's not a city event? And you look at things like the State Fair or the Maple Fall Fest, or some of these things that they're not city and marchfield events, but yet they, you know, use our property in some respects, or they have services provided to them by police, fire, and public works. I would suggest those are probably events that we're going to want to be discussing very closely with the the sponsors to see, you know, what can be worked out that would be acceptable, and again, be able to protect all the the health and safety needs that we can. Any questions on any of those other categories?
Questions from the council. Mr. Whittson.
Thank you. You talked about cemetery offices. What's happening with the tournaments and services right now?
All those are still on as scheduled. That hasn't been impacted, just the offices were closed.
Okay. There was reference to public versus private events and building rentals. I understand the concept of a business wanting to rent it for a business-based event versus a family wanting to rent it for a family gathering, but is there a designation for nonprofits or those types? Would those be clumped in with the public, or would those be considered private?
I would, those would be clumped in as private, we just discourage them, meaning talk to them, we want to know about their plan would be to accommodate the uses, expected attendance, what type of activity. We just want to make sure the public's aware that if you're inviting the public, you just have another, you have more responsibility to respond to the pandemic. For a private business, you obviously know who's coming to your private rental, whether that's a birthday party, a wedding, a graduation party, but a public one, you obviously don't know who is coming to your event, you're opening it up to the public. We just want to make sure they're aware of some of those risks.
So it's really less about who's sponsoring and really more about who's expected to arrive, whether it's open to public or a private close thing? Okay, and speaking of those buildings, do we have situations where people put money down on buildings and now find they can't necessarily use them safely, based on the current situation, and what are we doing about that?
We've been processing refunds since the beginning of this situation back in March, and everyone has been more than willing to understand the situation and excited, and I wouldn't say excited, but grateful that we gave them a full refund for their for their event.
So they are getting full refunds, and is there a timeframe when those are, like, there has to be X number of days ahead, or can it be up to? How does that work?
We have been just extending the refunds now based on today's date. So today, we always tell people based on till May 26th, when the council reviews the action. And so now going forward, we'll have to evaluate to see what they want to, still continue doing their event. For example, we had a 50th wedding anniversary scheduled for Sunday. We called them to see if they're still doing it, and they said, no, we canceled that a long time ago, but we forgot to tell you guys. So we understood and we work with them. So that's why we called them, and we will continue to work with the customers. But every situation's a little bit different.
Okay. And regarding City Hall, I know that we pretty much shut the building down. People are doing business remotely. How does that work with payments if there's things that need to be, you know, fees that need to be paid? How is this handled?
Well, it may depend on what department we're talking about, and I guess if anybody's on the call, some of our department heads that handle some of those fees, finance, clerk's office, whatever, maybe they could chime in.
I can speak on behalf of the City Clerk's Office. So they have options, they can pay by card, online. Otherwise, a fair share of them have been filling out the application, writing a check, putting in an envelope, and putting it in our Dropbox here at City Hall.
Okay. And if they are paying by card, it's my understanding there's a convenience fee? Is that correct?
Yes.
So they have to pay extra if they want to pay that way?
That's correct.
Okay. And then one final question, since I've been sort of monopolizing here. In the event of a worsening of conditions, is there sort of a penciled-out plan to kind of reel things back in again, and what would that look like?
You know, that that's a really good question. There isn't one at this time. That's obviously a possibility. There's there's been talk about, you know, would there be a surge or a spike at some future date? I think that's something we need to to work on and and prepare for. At this moment, I'll be honest, we we don't have that part two or that that backup plan right now.
Well, I'm going to optimistically hope it never happens, but that's all my questions. Thank you.
That was a really good question, too. It's a it's an important point to to not lose sight of.
Mr. Fisher, did you have your hand up?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question, and then if I can follow up with some comments. My question is, what is the difference in the approach of wastewater, for example, versus City Hall? I see two city buildings taking two very different approaches to how they are going to service the public. So can you first and foremost speak to that, why there's such a-
Yeah, yeah, I'll try a little bit. One of the difficulties in putting this plan together, and maybe it's frustrated council, it probably has, is is seeing multiple buildings and facilities treated differently. But I think you have to look at the fact that, you know, if we were individual businesses, like the the commercial sector or something, you'd see that we're vastly different. And certainly, the the volume and type of customers that we might see at City Hall versus wastewater versus the fire station or the library, you know, or out at the Wildwood Zoo for that that matter, definitely different numbers, differently different types of situations that result. So I think with the City Hall, it's a more restrictive type of thing we're looking at, and you see all the the personal protections we're trying to take and some of the the plans we're putting in place. I really think a large part of it is based upon the fact that we have considerably more customer traffic and public involvement in this facility, apart from the tours, which the wastewater department does, and they're very popular because they do an amazing job out there. So, you know, I think, maybe I'm not answering your question very well, but at City Hall, we've we've really tried to look carefully at the at the types of people we have, the volume we have at different times, and and try and plan for for social distancing and things like that in ways that maybe some of the facilities aren't quite as concerned about.
Thank you. I guess I'm, my comment is, and I can only speak for myself, but I I guess when I was envisioning this plan, I was envisioning something which would really address the approach holistically from the city and really our justification for what we're doing on a large scale. And again, what I see is really just a hodgepodge of this department is doing one thing, this facility is doing another, and I don't really see a strategy of how the city plans to reopen and when we are even going to reopen. I see May 27th, I see May 29th, I see May 31st, I see June 1st, I see Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three. And so I guess what I was envisioning was a a well-thought-out strategy and plan that would really give a phased approach and would give justification for why we are doing this. And I feel like this plan is lacking that, so thank you.
Steve, I do think that it is a little bit confusing. I mean, as as a citizen, if I go to this place, then this is closed. If I go to this place, this one's open, and so if I've got to do a bunch of rounds that day, was there ever any chance where, in order to open up, whatever date that is, that it was just practicing very, very good social distancing measures for the public and for our employees, some preventative measures, cleaning and sanitizing, have masks available, and then open? It just seems like this is, this is real. And I do understand the thing, but it's it's kind of like to to tell the citizens, you can go over here, you can go to the zoo, and you can go through the zoo, but you can't go to the Welcome Center when you're at the zoo. You can go to the Senior Center in the Second Street, and that's open, but you can't go in to the Senior Center, and it's, I don't know, I just, I think, I I'm wondering if we can use this for a base now, but then maybe we can get everybody kind of coordinated?
Yeah, I think you make a really good point, and actually, Adam, you make some good points along the way, too. I mean, I I think that the date thing, you know, is probably going to confuse people. We could have picked a single date. Instead of allowing some of these things to happen tomorrow or Friday, we could have just said, look, we're going to uniformly do as much as we can on Monday, June 1st, and we're going to have a big news release, the following 10 facilities open on June 1st. But but we didn't, we we figured, well, if somebody's ready to do this tomorrow or sometime yet this week, why not? I think your point, though, Mayor, is really a good one in the sense that there will be confusion in some of those facilities. I can go in, but I can't, I can't use this part of the facility. There's going to have to be a lot of PR. I think we're seniors are concerned, you know, there's a lot of concern about in that age bracket, many of those folks, about social distancing, about even being out and about yet. But, you know, there are going to be some people who get confused by this, and it's going to be incumbent upon us to work with Tom Laux very much and and get the word out through every way we can. We know that not everybody gets their news the same way, whether you're talking about the newspaper or social media or website. But you're right, there are some challenges from what appears to be kind of a piecemeal approach. The only thing I would say to that is, I just don't see a one-size-fits-all. I mean, the importance of getting City Hall up and running again is far more important than tours resuming at, you know, one of our facilities. That's why some of those are out in July or August. But the main services, we're trying to get started as soon as we are able to.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you. I have to disagree with Mr. Fisher. I think this is a well-thought-out plan. It's not just, boom, we're open. Like, it doesn't take much to look on the internet and see what happened in some of our southern states and other areas where they opened everything and there's no control over anything. This at least provides some guidance to our customers, our citizens, and it keeps our employees and and those citizens and customers safe. Yeah, it's not exactly clear what's going to happen when somebody shows up and wants to do something at City Hall that they're not allowed to do. Couple weeks down the road, they can come back and do that. Same with the parks and rec. But I think that this is a well-thought-out plan, and I think we should approve it.
Thank you. Anything for there?
Can I, can I jump in for that?
Sure.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you, Nick. We really appreciate that, on behalf of all the staff on the call and those who aren't. You know, this broke pretty fast, if you think about it. The State Supreme Court ruling came down on May 13th during the evening. The next night, we had a special council meeting on the CIP, and at that time, the council directed me and working with staff to come up with a plan. So it's really only been a week and a half, and I I appreciate your comments. I don't think we've answered all the questions by any means, but I thank you for your comments. I I hope we've got a good start in terms of trying to reopen.
Thank you, Mrs. Spears.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions for Mr. Casperson. You did not mention, or at least I did not see or hear, what would be your plan with all the local recreational activities, like youth volleyball and soccer and things like that?
That's a good question. Those recreational activities were not impacted by the pandemic or closed down. They were just, it depends on supply and demand. If there's enough kids signed up for a program and we can run it, we'll run the program long as we adhere to social distancing guidelines. But really, it's case by case for all those programs. So a good example is, we have a high school volleyball league that typically happens on Monday nights at the Oak Avenue Community Center. It's open right now. We're talking to teams to see if we can get enough teams together to run it. If there's not enough teams to run it, then we won't run it or obviously face staff. So it's a, it's like normal. We take each recreation program individually and see if it makes sense to run that in our facility or outside.
Please, Mrs. Spears.
And and then a couple more things. So I agree, there probably was a good amount of time spent by staff to put this together, but I have to agree with Adam and also with the mayor. I think the plan is too confusing. There's way too many differences between departments, between buildings. I could barely understand it, and I have the document in front of me, so I highly doubt that the citizens are going to be able to keep up with that. I think that this Badger Bounce Back, Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three, there there's no clear indication of when those phases start and begin. Those are guidelines that were put out there that could change every single day. And I understand that COVID is a fluid illness, and we're we're seeing a lot of changes, and we're we're seeing differing numbers, but but I I don't see anything definitive with those phases. So I find it really difficult to base our opening on those phases that could be changing. No one quite understands what those are or when they would occur anyway. And people's viewpoint's different on those bullet points greatly. You can talk to five different people, and they will interpret those bullet points of the Badger Bounce Back Program differently. So I I just have a hard time with linking our openings to those, to those, I don't know what you even want to call those, recommendations, guidelines, what have you. And then a couple of things that I wanted to just, I did some research today on numbers in the state of Wisconsin, and I I'm- in the state of Wisconsin, and I'm simply just going to go through this because I know that there are people who are listening to this and are wondering what we're going to do. So just to remind people that the Institute of Health and Metrics and Evaluation, those are the numbers that most states are looking to and relying on. And originally, they had predicted the peak of COVID for Wisconsin to be May the 22nd, which was just four days ago. They had changed the way that they looked at things and moved to that peak all the way back to April the 26th of 2020, in which they had predicted that 3,758 people in the state of Wisconsin would require hospitalization on that day, with 562 people needing ICU beds. That was back on the 26th of April. Currently, we have 1,350 people, or I'm sorry, they also predicted that 13 people would be dying on a daily basis at that point. But cases as of today, yes, today is the 26th, we have a total of 15,863 diagnosed cases ever in the hospital, 2,362 people. That is in comparison to what they said. Remember, they predicted 3,758 people on our peak day, which was a month ago. We are far below what they had predicted, as you know. And never hospitalized 8,755 people. To date, Wisconsin has been through 510 deaths, which of course is terrible. That's an awful number, but much, much, much less than they had predicted. So, you know, I think in the last few days, the percent of cases has dipped every day. Today, or as of Monday, they were down 4.1%. That was down from 5.5% on Sunday and 6.8%. That is the percent of positive cases on Saturday. So that number just continues to go down and down and down. And as of today, in the state of Wisconsin, there's been 200,874 negative tests compared to 15,863 positive tests, again, with 2,362 people hospitalized and 517 deaths. I think it's really important to remind the public who don't necessarily look at all of these numbers and listen to headlines or to the news constantly. And, you know, if you did that, you would probably drive yourself crazy because they have nothing positives to offer. With that said, I will yield the floor.
Mr. Buckey?
Yeah, we have to come up with a consistent date on this. It's very
Get your mic.
It is. How's this?
There you go.
We have to be consistent. For example, it was on Facebook today that somebody called the Marshall Police Department and called the Marshall Park and Recreation Department, and we're told that everything's open. And talking to our representative here, he doesn't believe that they got it. I think what it was, was Wood County, because Wood County was opening up a lot of things. So the point is, if we have all these different dates, like Mr. Fisher and Mrs. Spears, and Mr. Wagner was alluding to it earlier, let's be consistent on this, and so the people know, we will not have a chance to communicate this. Tom Laux does an amazing job, but it's not going to work with the different dates.
Mr. Wagner? I thought you had your
I did a little while ago. Thanks, Mr. Buckey, for stealing my thunder. That's all right. But the point, I guess, the guidelines, I know the Badger Bounce Back came under a lot of criticism, but I do know that there are other guidelines out there that are being recommended, can be used by our staff. And I think that there's the CDC guidelines, and then there's also the Wisconsin Economic Development Association or Corporation guidelines that pretty much give us a roadmap. And then, of course, they're all voluntary, but we, as a city, have no authority to enforce them. But I think we can, I think if we start a, if we have a uniform time, like Mr. Buckey is suggesting, if we have that, if we have that uniform time, it will give us the time for our staff to make sure that they take a look at those CDC guidelines and the WEDA guidelines and basically have the facilities ready under those circumstances. I was a little bit surprised to hear that there were recreation programs that were sort of ongoing. That really surprised me a little bit. But the most important thing we can do is institute, as a city, is institute those guidelines and eliminate as much confusion as we possibly can. And if we institute the guidelines, we have to do it in mind that, I think as Sue Conferman had said in her letter, that basically the Badger Bounce Back is gone, but the virus is still here. It is. And the mayor did a wonderful job on tracking the virus, a wonderful spreadsheet here that he handed out before the meeting. But it shows that things are going in the right direction, and that's great. That's terrific. That's wonderful. The problem is, it's still here, and there are still numbers happening every day. And we want to keep those numbers down, and we want to keep them, we want to sort of starve the beast, if you will. So that's what I encourage everybody to do here. And I would encourage Steve to take another look at it and see if he could get some uniformity to it and meet with the department heads and see if they'll work with their schedules also. And thank you for the floor, sir.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? So there is a motion to approve the reopening plan as presented. Mr. Whitzel?
I don't know that we had a motion yet. I just had a couple more, I guess, quick comments regarding some of this. We're saying that there are a lot of events that take place in the city. Some are city-sponsored, although I'm not certain that many are. Most are from organizations such as Mackey or the Fairgrounds or whatever. We don't seem to have a uniform approach to that either. Quite frankly, last I heard, very first was postponed, but now I'm hearing rumors that it may be canceled. I don't know. Hub City Days is another. I know that was mentioned during the presentation of this, of things like April Fall Fest. But then, and there's maybe some caution or talking to organizers about how those will or will not happen, but yet we're also looking at things like the fair saying, eh, if they want to run it, they can run it, without a whole lot of input from there either. So there seems, again, to be some maybe inconsistency. I guess the volume of people at a fair, the number of days that a fair occurs, and the wide range of people, you know, geographically that may attend a fair versus a two-day Maple Fall Fest or a two-day Dairy Fest, it doesn't seem to equate the same way. So I guess I'm not certain or I'm questioning the inconsistency with those types of things as well, if that may be addressed.
Steve?
Yeah, thank you for allowing me to follow up on that one right away. The reason, and maybe the city attorney will chime in on this a little bit, I'd appreciate that, is each of these is a little bit different. When we talk about the Central Wisconsin State Fair, the board has a contract with the city to have basically the exclusive rights to use that, the grounds, the Central Wisconsin State Fair grounds, for five weeks during the late summer. And so, you know, at some level, we've authorized them to move ahead, and they've got full control of the property for that purpose. On the other hand, they require considerable services from us, that we provide, police, fire, and other things during the fair, which suggests that there really should be some kind of a partnership, in my opinion, on decisions to move forward. Then you look at, you know, Maple Fall Fest, it's a slightly different situation. You know, Dairy Fest, again, you know, it's largely a Mackey event, but the city participates. I know that that sounds very hodgepodge-like, but I think we need to get more serious here. I know I've been tied up in a lot of other things just for their own facilities, but in terms of trying to work with these leaders and look at these later summer and early fall events and figure out where to go with it. I think the city has a role, but I think in each case, the role is slightly different. Hap, would that fit your perspective?
Yeah, well, I have discussed a little bit that I wanted to also, or recommend it, to try to reach as much of a unified approach as we can. There definitely are challenges to that. One of those is that certain facilities are controlled by different entities, utilities, for example, and the library, another example, that doesn't come under the complete control of the council. But when you're talking about those types of events, we basically have private contracts in place, and to the extent, this body has an absolute control over, number one, its facilities and its services. So I think that you could pretty much do whatever you wanted, open, close, whatever. And I think we could justify that by statute. There certainly is a basis to go to practically extremes on either end, meaning completely open, and we aren't not going to, we're not going to have any restrictions to, we are going to close down these facilities, and they're going to be treated as extreme as they were under the Safe at Home or even further. There is even a basis, I discussed this with you folks last time, to control the public and some activities that the public may engage in. So you have a lot of latitude to do whatever this body wishes to do. However, because Safe at Home is gone, I think, and we are left with what amounts to basically guidelines, when you talk about the fair, you talk about some of these others where there's contracts in place, we're obligated probably to abide by those contracts, the extent that they can, you know, lease out facilities and do things under those contracts that does stay in place, and they have the latitude to do it. But as Steve referenced, that, you know, we do provide certain services for that, so we are doing that not necessarily under contract, so I do think you control that. Steve's correct, at least in terms of some of those things, though, we don't have complete control over.
And actually, to follow up on that, Dale Christensen, the executive director of the Central Wisconsin State Fair Association, has contacted me and asked, you know, for me to feel a lot of things on our end, I need to get back to him in terms of how the city views the fair and if there's any concerns about them moving forward, what we'd expect from them if it's going to happen. So I definitely need to follow up with him. I'm sure I'll be talking with Matt McLean about Maple Fall Fest in September. You know, I think there needs to be some joint discussions and hopefully some joint understanding that comes out of it before we start, you know, trying to take out a heavy hand here. We'd like to see those events continue, but there's obviously health issues that need to be addressed.
Anything further from the council? Mr. Bargender?
Sorry. I'm trying, I'll make this brief. Listening both sides of the story, both sides here tonight, I think we should move ahead with staff recommendation to get the city somewhat open. But we need to revisit this again at the next council meeting, see how things are going, and see what we have, if things are not going smoothly, we need to tweak at that time. Badger Bounce Back, a lot of different opinions on that. Is it valid, is it not valid? Obviously, the Supreme Court says it's not. So I think it falls on the local governments. We know what's going on here in Marshville, okay? We have a better handle on things. We have direct, there's direct communications between the hospital, clinic people, and the mayor here and staff. So I think it should be more up to us as a council, but we do re, you know, like Rebecca said, it's very fluid, COVID is very fluid. So we, so in two weeks, things change a lot. Daily, things change a lot. But I think we need to get open as soon as possible, and, but revisit it, tweak things, to make things better. And hopefully, the curve goes down, we get reopened quicker, and all these events we've been talking about, maybe some of them can happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Spears.
Just for clarification purposes, is there a motion on the floor or no? No.
There's not a motion yet. There's
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we, as the city, open our facilities and our buildings as of June 1st, practicing all, you know, safety issues that people feel appropriate, putting the signage for safe distancing, putting out masks, hand sanitizer and cleaning, doing terminal cleans at the end of the day, and, you know, in between events, that that's what each director chooses. But I think we need to remain consistent, and so I would like to see us be fully open as of Monday, June 1st.
Is there a second to that motion? Mr. Handler, is that a second?
Yes.
Yep. Any discussion to that motion? Mr. Wagner?
Thank you. I tend to agree with what Ms. Spears is proposing. Basically, it's like having a starting gun that will, all city staff will start at. It gives us time to prepare for it in some regards. And if I recall, on some of the things I've seen, June 1st seems to be a calming date that some of them were working toward anyway. So basically, the only people who would be affected by this, or the only ones that would be affected, are the ones that were trying to open tomorrow morning or Friday morning or whatever. So I'm going to go along with this, but with the caveat that, boy, I hope this doesn't cause a problem, and I'm as concerned about it as anybody else. Thank you.
Mr. Fisher?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Two things. One, I just want to make sure, or just maybe bring this to light, I think hearing conversation from both the city administrator and the city attorney, that the fire department, the police department, the library, and Marshall Utilities seem to be governed by other boards, is it safe to say by that motion, we are not including those four groups in that motion? I just want some clarification.
It would appear that the fire department and the police department were already opening up. The commission that you, the Marshall Utilities wasn't, and it looked like the library was as well. But your point is well-taken, Steve, is we can't exceed their authority. And is this doing that?
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
I guess my thought is, I think we should treat those four differently. You know, I mean, the Fire and Police Commission, for example, I think are the authority. There's a Utility Commission, I think you can make an argument there, also with the library board. So I just want to, though Mrs. Spears didn't say that, I just want to make sure that, I guess there's a consensus that those four are not included in that motion. Thank you.
Mr. Whitzel?
I also, I guess, like to get clarification regarding the broad aspect of park and rec. We're saying buildings, so we're saying, you know, the park and rec office, we're saying the cemetery office, we're saying the tenants and their spaces at Oak Avenue. But we're not saying that it's have a pool, because it would, you know, it's not possible, from what I'm understanding, to say, you know, as of June 1, kids can go swimming, because, first of all, I think that's earlier than what they would normally be open anyway, with school officially not done until the following weekend. But I also understand that there would be significant work. I guess I would like to, for clarification purposes, understand that a little bit more, and perhaps the interesting concept here of bids and money raised and new aquatic center and groundbreaking, and do we even need to open the pool this year and all those things? I'd like to see that as a separate agenda item that maybe is addressed next council meeting, so that we can make a plan for that particular outdoor venue as we move forward as well.
Mrs. Spears?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, I'm sorry. For clarification purposes, I did say city buildings and operations, I believe, that I do not think would include the Marshall Utilities. Police and fire are pretty much already open. And what was the other one that they asked about? Oh, the library. I'm sorry, yes, the library board would have, you know, I would have no issue with the library's plan that is written out or whatever. As far as the city pool goes, I can see us pulling that out and talking about that separately. And when I say June 1st, I mean, we would follow the typical operations that we always do every single year. So if the pool doesn't open until July 1st every single year, that would have been my intention behind this, is that we would operate as we would have any other year, but be fully open and operational with the city buildings. city buildings, um, facilities, parks, cemeteries, whatever else is on the list.
A couple of things. Uh, one other one that's out there that I have seen kind of developing is that the municipal court, um, under statute has the control over its operations. There has been an extensive order that came down from the Supreme Court, basically still tailoring back based on a task force and some studies that they did, uh, basically recommending that you not open up to the public. Um, and, uh, so the circuit courts are basically implementing their own type of program. That does have a spill over to the municipal court, so the municipal court judge ultimately has the control over that. Uh, in addition, I would caution, um, the, just simply to be clear about what the direction was because, um, when, uh, Councilmember Spiros referenced the sort of what, uh, how that would be done, it was a reference to, with the directors, you know, implementing the safety precautions, something fairly vague. We need to be careful with that because that gets back to the issue that sort of brought all this together, and that is that, um, there's not a unified directive in terms of how to go about, um, doing that. Um, and so there's, there's no, uh, specific, um, there's no specific guidelines that are being implemented. So it's fine if you do that, but that does then expose sort of a, you know, each department kind of doing whatever they want, whether that means hand sanitizers, et cetera. The Supreme Court's order that came down was very specific in terms of providing plexiglass, providing masks for everybody, that they had to wear masks in court, et cetera. Um, and so, and it was, you know, a basis for a guideline with that. Since we don't really have something like that with the city, we, we still are exposed to sort of what did it mean if you tell each of the departments to sort of implement the safety precautions. So, uh, it'd be nice to use something. I, I know that it doesn't exist in terms of, uh, you know, some specific guideline, but, um, some general consensus maybe wanted to, you might want to direct that.
Mr. Wagner?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, one thing I want to address specifically, I was just looking at the memorandum from Chief Owen, and I know Chief Owen had some, some concerns about this also, but essentially, what he's, the lobby area opened to public and the plexiglass there, um, they'll remain open. The only things that he puts off until mid-June are the, uh, the Wood County Health things and the, what's the other one? The, oh, and the fire inspections, uh, that's, so essentially, I, I think he would be, he would be in compliance with what Ms. Spiros wants as long as that lobby was open to the public after June 1st. Is that, is that your intention? And, and Chief Owen, I see you there. Can you give me a thumbs up or thumbs down or slap my throat or whatever?
No.
Gotcha.
No. So anyway, the, the reason that we put the plan together, um, the way that it was or is, um, is really because we have all of our proverbial eggs in one basket. If we have, uh, someone who is exposed and they don't know it because there's that, that incubation period, they have the potential of, of spreading that out to all three shifts and wiping out fire and ambulance service. Uh, we do not have another paramedic level service in the vicinity. Our closest paramedic level, uh, unit is La Salle, Safer, Rapids, Point. So we're 40 miles away to a paramedic unit. Um, same with fire. If we lose, um, a bunch of people, uh, because of, uh, infections, uh, because of this virus, um, it can have detrimental effects on fire suppression. Um, we do have plans in place with, uh, Rapids and Point to do backfill. Um, you know, we do have mutual aid, but, uh, even the mutual aid departments, uh, the volunteer departments, they have trouble, um, staffing their normal calls, much less helping us. So the reason that we did the, uh, the Stagard approach was to really test the waters to see how it's going. Um, you know, talking with Dr. Jennifer Meese, uh, from the clinic research, um, Jen said, you know, if they were up to herd, the fire station would remain closed for a long time, uh, just because of the unknown, uh, path that this, uh, virus is gonna take. Um, you know, could it come back with a vengeance? It could. Could it be totally gone? It could. We, we don't know. Um, you know, but our, our approach, um, was a methodical, test the water type of approach to see how it's gonna go. And, you know, we'll reel it back if we need to just because of, uh, what's happening, uh, in the local area.
Mr. Fisher?
I'm sorry, Mr. Fire? I've got a question for the senior center. Are we gonna have a distancing? Are we gonna keep people apart there? Or are we, I'm gonna tell you why, because when they shoot pool, they shoot right atop each other. When they play cards, they sit right next to each other. And that is, that is probably one of your prime groups of having problems with the COVID. So how are we gonna control the senior center? If you're, if you're just gonna open it up at June 1, tell me, tell me how. I'm the president of the group. What I'm gonna tell these people. Have at it. That's a problem. Some people won't show, I'll, I'll give you that. Some people are gonna wanna show, and they're gonna want everybody to wear masks. Now there's gonna be a fight. Joe doesn't wanna wear it, Bill does. So how do, how do we handle it?
Nick?
What I'm hearing here is, um, there's a motion that we open everything up, but then everybody here has their opinion of what should be treated differently and what should not be treated differently and which department should be opening up and which shouldn't. And maybe we should just leave it up to the department heads to determine what's the safest way to open their department. But that's what we had to begin with, with the plan from the department heads and the city administration, a safe way to open things up, maybe not everything all at once, but a plan. Why should we be making our own plan here tonight when we already have a plan? It's ridiculous.
Steve, would there be a way that if we did go with, if the council decided to either go with this plan or with your original plan, that you'd be able to bring back maybe a tightened-up version at the next council meeting?
Yeah, that's very possible. If I can comment on a couple of other things too, at the same time, Bob. Um, the idea of the date, I think the reason the dates are different is in part because it was kind of put together in a sense in silos because we did it so quickly. We did it in a one-week time. And I think some of the dates that you see that are tomorrow for opening, uh, probably in part because we thought you might be expecting it right away. So if we could do it, we'll do it. Uh, others going with June 1st, you know, the start of a new week, uh, maybe a better place to start. So if you wanted to uniformly make everything June 1st that we could, uh, that, that's, that's fine. I do have questions and I, and I thank Nick for his comments because there's a lot of other things left open. I mean, saying that as of June 1st, we're gonna open the City Hall and the Oak Avenue Community Center and the Second Street Community Center, that's all fine and dandy. But the question is some of the things below the surface. So we opened the Second Street Community Center. Does that mean the senior center portion is, is open for full use? I think Mike makes some great comments about whether or not that raises some health concerns. Uh, the fact that we opened the zoo, uh, okay, but what about the, the welcome center? I mean, that's got some, some challenges of its own. So in other words, as much as I, you know, listen to what, uh, you know, Rebecca's comments sound really nice and simplistic, it leaves some of these other underlying questions, even, even the thought about when some of the services would be resumed, such as tours and whatnot, I think is a, is a maybe secondary part of the plan, but, but an important part of the plan overall. So I guess I, I was gonna ask where some of those ancillary and secondary, uh, points come in if we just talk, uh, solely about reopening facilities.
Okay, and I'll just, uh, I am repeating myself, but I wanna make sure I ask this and then I'll get, I'll get to you, Mrs. Spiros. If, if your original plan is approved, as, as Nick stated, will that give you another two weeks to come back and tighten it up? So it's consistent for the public because it's just, and everybody's argument is a good argument. Everybody's argument is a good argument, but there's a lot of confusion there. Um, so I would just hope you'd be able to do that. Mrs. Spiros?
Yeah, okay.
I agree. There's a lot of confusion because people are making this super confusing. Um, I said that we would open city building operations with fully operational on July 1st. We would continue, of course, to follow our normal schedule. So that means that if kids' basketball starts in July, it still starts in July, just like it would have last year and the year before and the year before. And that we follow CDC guidelines on social distancing, washing your hands and using masks. As far as regulating people's behaviors, you can't do that. If, if the elderly wanna go to the senior center and they feel safe about it, they'll go. If they don't, they'll stay home because they still have that option. They can go or they can stay home, depending on how they feel. And that's what they'll do because it's been on the news over and over and over and over and over. And everybody knows what COVID is. They know how it's spread. They know how to prevent it. Furthermore, you've got people standing at Menards, Walmart, Festival, uh, Target. There's no social distancing. This has been going on ever since COVID started. Some of those stores never closed down. You've gotta give people credit. Stop trying to regulate their behaviors and allow them to choose what they wanna do. That's all I'm saying. You open up, you open up fully, following proper guy, following the guidelines of the CDC for hand washing, cleansing, a lot, put masks out if you want, but you cannot regulate people's behaviors. They're going to do what they want. There are elderly people who will be, feel perfectly safe about going to the senior center. There will be many that won't. So the ones that want to go will go, the ones who won't, won't. And the other thing is, and, and I'm just addressing Mr. Patil with this, why are we as a common council making this? Because that's what they told us to do. They said that the local governments, the local health officers should make the guidelines for their communities. We are the common council. That's why we're doing it. With that, I will yield the floor.
Thank you. Mr. Handler?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I called a question on Mrs. Spiros', uh, recommendation.
So that was to open up, um, June 1st and, uh, with social distancing, preventative measures, cleaning and sanitizing, and making masks available. So there's a motion and a second. Is there any?
Uh, Mayor?
Yes.
You have a, he made a motion to call the question. You need a second on that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there a second to call a question? Mr. Fisher? Do we need to vote on that?
Yes.
Yep, do a roll call vote on that. Please.
Fire?
Yes.
Patil?
Yes.
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Whittle?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Spiros?
Yes.
Buttke?
Yes.
And Handler?
Yes.
Thank you. So there was a motion and a second to, what's that?
It's to vote on Spiros.
Correct. Um, so please do a roll call vote for that.
Okay, I just wanna confirm because she said two different dates. One time she said June 1st, one time July 1st.
June 1st.
June. Thank you. Fire?
I, I have one question before I vote. Are we having, are we having social distancing in this motion? Are we gonna keep people apart?
That is part of it. Is it, it's, is it their social distancing people still should do? They, they should practice their own personal safety measures. So absolutely, it'd be social, social distancing, preventative measures, cleaning and sanitizing and, and having masks available.
I vote no.
No.
Rosendish?
No.
Bargander?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Whittle?
Yes.
Spiros?
Yes.
Buttke?
Yes.
And Handler?
Yes.
That motion carries six to four. All right, item T, uh, appointment of Quentin Rosenditch to the library board, uh, presented by Bob McMahon. I'm sorry. Mr. Buttke?
I'm fine, just fine.
Oh. Is there a motion to appoint, uh, Quentin to the library board? A motion by Mr. Buttke is seconded by Mr. Wagner. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Handler?
Yes.
Buttke?
Yes.
Spiros?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Whittle?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Rosendish?
Yes.
Patil?
Yes.
And Fire?
Yes.
Thank you. And item U, uh, the appointment of Ginger Cornish, 808 South Oak Street, to the vacant position of the second alternate on the Board of Appeals. Uh, look for a motion to approve, uh, the appointment as presented. A motion by Mr. Wagner, is there a second? Uh, second by Mr. Bargander, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, uh, roll call vote, please.
Fire?
Yes.
Patil?
Yes.
Rosendish?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Whittle?
Yep.
Fisher?
Yes.
Spiros?
Sure.
Buttke?
Yes.
Handler?
Yes.
And that motion carries, uh, item B, adjourned to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Chapter 19.851E deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons required closed session. Sale of property at 8th and Holly, sale of property at 8th and Hemlock, lease extension for property at 305 West Third Street, uh, and closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Chapter 19.851G, conferring with legal counsel for the government body, uh, who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or likely to become involved, possible litigation against the city regarding a development project, an update on possible litigation related to employment claims of a city. Is there a motion to clo, into closed session? A motion, motion by Mr. Whittle, seconded by Mr. Buttke?
I give up, I got fire.
Any, a roll call vote, please.
Fire?
Yes.
Patil?
Yes.
Rosendish?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Whittle?
Yes.
Fisher?
God, yes. Thank you.
Spiros?
Yes.
Buttke? Yes.
And Fire?
Thank you. We're in closed section. Y'all wanna take a five-minute break?